It is six o'clock PM. I'd like to call the virtual meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. This is a special policy meeting. And also like to welcome everyone in our virtual audience and our audiences that are watching tonight's meeting on our YouTube channel, City of Peoria TV. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Here. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Rockregal.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to mute your mics until you're ready to speak. And I want to start by reading the COVID-19 remote meeting notice. Governor Prisker's current disaster proclamation is in effect until February the 6th, 2022. Public meetings may be held remotely in accordance with Public Act 101-0640. Public bodies must take steps to provide video, audio, or telephonic access to public meetings. The City of Peoria is conducting this special meeting, special city council meeting via Zoom while complying with Open Meetings Act. Members of the public and media are invited to watch live through the City of Peoria's YouTube page. Any submissions for public comment will be read by the city clerk at the end of the meeting. The agenda, minutes, and video podcasts of the meeting will be available online through the city and county's website. I'd like to ask everyone just to take a brief moment of silent reflection. And we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. I realize it's kind of awkward to stand on video. So you may wish to, you know, just either bow or put your hand over your heart. It's up to you. For silent reflection. If you can unmute yourselves. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash zero four two is a communication from the mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Can you call the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Ali.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Seer.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Euler.
Aye.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Aye.
Councilmember Rockregal.
Aye.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we are at the policy session. Twenty-two dash zero one five is a communication from the city manager and Corporation Council with a request to hold a policy session on redistricting council districts. And we need a motion to open the policy session.
May I have a motion to open for Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Aye.
Councilmember Allen.
Aye.
Councilmember Seer.
Aye.
Councilmember Graham.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Euler.
Aye.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Aye.
Councilmember Rockregal.
Aye.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And then I wanted to mention, there were two handouts that were sent to all council members. It's also available on the city's website. There's a new version 2.3 redistricting map. And there's also a new version comparison report updated with regards to version 2.3 that was distributed as well.
Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this evening we have four maps, new maps to walk through with you. As you know, during the policy session that we held two weeks ago, we had three maps or versions one, two, and three. Staff took the input from the city council, tried to work through using and sticking in most cases to to our major thoroughfares to minimize the cuts into the neighborhood associations. And we've come up with three maps or four maps, excuse me. We have version 2.1, version 2.2. Both of those are modifications off of the version two map that we have. And then we have a version four map. Those were all in the packet. Following the distribution of those maps, following a discussion between Councilman Grab and Councilman Riegenbach, we have a version 2.3 map which modifies the district lines in districts two and three and districts one and two. And what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to Josh Navin from the Community Development Department, who can kind of walk through, kind of in general terms, what these maps look like, as well as putting them up on the screen for everyone to take a look at as well. So with that, Mr. Navin?
Okay, so is everyone hearing me okay? Great, so.
Yes.
Josh, did we lose your audio?
How's that?
There we go.
Okay, apologies. So again, in versions two, one, 2.2, and 2.3, districts one, two, and three are all north-south orientations. In district, or I'm sorry, in version 2.1, District one encompasses the south side, the warehouse district, up into the uplands area. The cottage district is in District one in this version. The uplands, north up to Sterling Oaks and the Ward Cliff area. And Council District two includes the downtown business district, into the west bluff here and center bluff, all the way up to Northmore Road up at the top here. District three encompasses, you know, southeastern portions of the city of Peoria, hugging the Peoria Heights boundary up to Northmore as well here. The break is University at the top and Sheridan in the middle here down to Forest Hill Drive and then Knoxville heading back down to the downtown area. District four encompasses the eastern portion of the city of Peoria with Richwoods as a southern boundary to Sterling Avenue to I-74, the overpass to Memorial and Allen Road. The western boundary is University here and the northern boundary is Will and Oles. The remainder of the city is District five. For version 2.2, districts four and five stay the same. The boundary merely changes between District two. Moss Bradley is split at University. The cottage district remains in District two here. And the border between one and two follows University from Main Street north to Gale and goes to I-74 again. And then I'll cover 2.3, which is a little out of order, but in keeping with the same theme here. 2.3, again, four and five remain the same. Council District three comes over to University, south to Memorial, then over to Knoxville, south downtown. The boundary between District two and one changes to the Moss Bradley area here, north on University, inclusive of some properties within the Bradley University area, west on McClure, and then northwest on Gale to I-74 again. Version four is a deviation from the second version amendments. And really, Council District one is the existing council district with some changes here on Glen Oak and Spring Street. But it does include the properties from Sheridan and Main Street South into District one. So the entirety of Bradley University area into District one. Council District two is a central portion of the city. And it goes from the existing boundary to Reservoir, to Sterling, to the interstate, and then to the overpass and then I-74 with a notch out to account for population. District three is in, inclusive of the existing boundaries. The north portion is Northmore again to Allen Road. And then on the western portion is Memorial. Council District four, so western portion of the city again. And Council District five, the break between those two is Pioneer Park, we in University here at the top. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have or move from there.
Josh, could you maybe just walk through the neighborhood association splits from each of the versions, just to summarize those quickly?
Sure. So in versions 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3, the Moss Bradley Residential Association is split in those. Also, the Downtown Living Neighborhood Association, those, but that split is merely a parking lot split that's under the Bob Michael Bridge. So, and you'll have a split whenever a neighborhood association straddles a major thoroughfare. Now, the, and then in version four, the Glen Oak Flanagan Housing Association has been split because of the break at Glen Oak Avenue. But it, you know, we could solve that by using the existing council district boundary between District one and three versus the thoroughfare to account for that split. Just depends on how the council wants to move on which criteria I guess is more important. Does that serve as a summary?
Yes, thank you very much. So Mayor, I think that just gives everyone a quick overview and we'd be happy to answer any council questions that they have or concerns or take that back and into consideration.
And can you talk from your viewpoint, Mr. Manager, in terms of the potential splits of a of a neighborhood association? Are there any advantages to that?
Well, I think, you know, what we, what we were looking to do, and you know, council's direction was to try and minimize those splits. And the challenge in any of the maps that we draw is that, is that we're gonna have to move the first district north either through the west bluff or through the east bluff. And, you know, as prior versions had shown, and as this version four that's up on the map shows that, you know, you take a neighborhood like Moss Bradley and it would have, and Bradley University would have to come up and into the first district just to meet the population requirements. So, you know, what, you know, one of the things that I think that we looked at was minimizing that as much as we possibly could. And I do think, though, that in, in the versions 2.1, 2, and 3, where you have, you have the Moss Bradley neighborhood is predominantly the one that gets split, you do end up with two city council, district council members that represent that area. And it just so happens, we have, we have two at-large district council members that represent that area as well. But I think that, that what we were, what we were really trying to do is, is meet the, the population requirements as best we possibly could with all three of those versions of, of the 2.1, 2, and 3 that would try and minimize the, the the amount of work that maybe one district might have over another with, you know, as right now, for example, with this district format, District one encompasses a significant amount of the riverfront of the city and a significant amount of, of, of work. And, and I know that the city staffed efforts are really directed in a lot of ways towards not only the south side and the central business district and the warehouse district, but also the north valley and Averyville as well, so.
So this, versions one, two, and three are the same versions that we saw last two weeks ago?
That is correct.
Correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so the only modifications are on 2.1, 2, 3, and 4?
That is correct.
Okay. Josh, if you don't mind lowering the shit, maybe it's the, the maps for now? Okay, that's great. Then I can see everybody's hand raised.
No problem.
Thank you. We'll want, we'll want you to put some maps back up pretty soon, though.
Oh, I thought I was done. It's okay.
Not yet. Okay, questions, council? Or comments, if you're kind of leaning toward a certain version, it'd be good for us, for us to know and, you know, why? Have you gotten all your questions answered? Okay, there we go. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as for the fifth district, version 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, they seem to be all very similar. I really like the fact that we're, it's easy for me to explain to my constituent where the boundaries are at, when they are at, you know, Knoxville, Sheridan, Northmore, University, Will knows, so it's all very easy to, to explain. So any of those versions that are, seem to be all identical, that would be my preference.
Again, that would be versions 2.1, 2.3?
2.2 and 2.3, they seem to be all identical, I believe, for the fifth district. Is that correct, Patrick?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Yeah, so I need those three, Madam Mayor, if you're okay with me. It's easy to explain to my constituent.
Very good. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was inclined to map two, two weeks ago when we, when we talked. And I really appreciate the work that Mr. Navin and the manager did in respecting some of the comments from Councilman Grab and myself. For instance, just nuances, but North Florence got put into the third district and my neighborhoods, Stratford Air, for instance, got put into the second. So by just making a few tweaks, we were able to minimize the impact for the constituents and keep them in the same council district. And I really like this 2.3 because of the clear definition of the boundary lines. I think that's really nice and crisp. And again, to Councilman Seer's point, it's easy to explain to people. You go up 74 to Knoxville, to Royal Memorial, to University. I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's minimal nooks and crannies. So 2.3 would be the one that I'm leaning to at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts, preferences, leanings? Council, Councilmember Grab? Can you unmute your mic?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We're preparing maps that will project some tears in the future. Yes, we're looking at these maps with the lens for now. And always with an eye to possibility of losing some family members. Because that, that's really what happens. And it's somewhat painful to see neighborhoods where Councilman Riegenbach and I had this discussion where we've done a lot of work and have projects pending. And to see any of this go elsewhere is difficult. On the other hand, we have to make the math work. And we have to do what's sensible and what is comprehensible and understandable for our constituents. I do believe that staff has largely minimized the amount of dismemberment we had last time with 2.3. And that includes the southern part of District two where one would come as well as to the north where three meets two and where we did not dismember North Florence Bigelow or get into Councilman Riegenbach's area and, and affect just exchanging populations, which would not make a lot of sense. So I'm inclined to think that 2.3 is an excellent map. But as I've said many times before, I've served the people both in an at-large capacity all over the city. I know all the neighborhoods. I've been privileged to serve in District two now the past nine years. It's the district councilman. I will serve in whatever capacity I am asked to serve or whatever this council chooses in terms of a map. But I do think these are maps that have to make sense years out, long after we're gone, possibly. We might be here forever, but I doubt it. So I would say 2.3 is, is a good map. But again, you know, I'm willing to do it any one of a number of other ways. Some of the other ways that were put forth are okay, too. But right now, I guess I'm leaning at 2.3, but I wish I didn't have to lose any part of my district, my current district. But the math has to work. I did make a suggestion along the lines of, and I even talked to Counselor Jackson about this. Why can't we just continue to run District one through the valley down Galena Road to the senior citizen homes and everything in between where it is now? And I was given a very, very simple answer. It would involve a break there. There would be a problem with it in terms of the contiguous factor that we would not have with those senior citizen homes in that area north of Ward Drive on Galena Road remaining, and I believe it remains in three. So while we may think we have brilliant ideas, you know, there are so many different factors that have to be juggled and put into play. And I'm convinced that the latest map, 2.3, minimizes as much as possible tearing apart the current maps. And I think that's good for our constituents.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'm glad you pointed out the, the, kind of the rule or guideline associated with the areas have to be, the districts have to be contiguous. And that's a prime example. Thank you. Others? Councilmember Jackson, did you want to speak too?
Sure, sure. You know, I can appreciate what Counselor Grab and Counselor Riegenbach shared in terms of map number two, three, minimizing, you know, the, what we have currently have with regards to our district. And, and, and I will say this, as the one council member who's lost the most population, I am willing to work with whatever we come up with. Because I think at the end of the day, when we look at the entire city, regardless of where, and I appreciate Councilman Grab's hard work, but wherever some of your work lands, Councilmember Grab, please don't consider it a loss because I think whatever projects we have going on anywhere within the city are good for Peoria as a whole. So I, I just want to say that, yes, I, I kind of like map 2.3. But I will say this, you know, after looking at some of the emails and concerns from people about neighborhood associations, I want to reassure anybody who becomes a new, becomes a part of District one that I will represent them to the best of my ability. And that is beyond 100%. So I'm just happy wherever District one lands to be able to welcome in those constituents and work on behalf of everybody represented in that new District one boundary.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Euler, sorry, I didn't see your hand at first, but yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. No problem. I'd say if there is an advantage to having at-large members, that's probably the ability to have a broader view of some of these types of discussions and not having to be quite so personally and district impacted by changes that are made. And so I'd say from my broad standpoint, 2.3 is the closest thing that I think to a fair map, a map that's based on geographic boundaries and not districts and neighborhoods following certain council members, but gives us the ability to have a clear definition and explanation to constituents throughout the city. clear definition and explanation to constituents throughout the city is this is where the boundaries lie, and this is why we made the decisions that we made. So to me, any further adjustments, in my opinion, should be off of that two point three map. And, and I, even at this point, am comfortable with the two point three map. And so I would like to see us push forward with, you know, that or some version of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna seem to, I guess, echo a lot of the comments that have been made so far. But having looked at all the versions that we've had come through this whole process, and the challenges that we have to be able to meet the qualifications that we do, that I also, I look at two point three and the version there, and I appreciate the work that was done by staff to be able to pull that together and to be able to bring that in, kind of as a, as a late idea here as well. Because I think that it goes back to the main arteries, it keeps that together. And it, it does separate a, a neighborhood that is something that we tried not to do. I, I know that city staff has tried very hard not to be able to do that. And the realities are that our neighborhoods are various different sizes, they, they take different forms. And there is probably only so much that we can, can do to be able to meet the qualifications we need. With that, Moss Bradley is a strong neighborhood association and has always had a good connectivity as a neighborhood association. And I think that the history of that will always maintain that connectivity as well. And as we, as we go the next steps forward, I think that I as well would like to see two point three as the starting point for where we go. This might be the final version in its entirety, but I think that this probably lends itself to the best conversation for us to, to continue forward.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman. Thoughts from other council members? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm ju, I'm wondering what, I, I tend to like version one, but I don't know what other council people think of that one. I don't know if we talked about that one as much in the last meeting. I was going through the minutes. Because I do like how it keeps most of Moss Bradley, if not all of it, it's still basically in District Two, and it's all together. It's not split. So I'm curious as to what Councilman Grab, what his thoughts are on that version, or any other council members.
Counselor Jensen, are you talking two point?
No, I'm talking about, sorry, version one, which is one of the, which is from last week.
Oh. Not two point one.
No, version one.
Okay.
Which I guess Josh could put it on the screen if.
Josh, you want to pull that one up? Can you talk about that one, Josh?
Sure. So for Council District Four and Five, they really share the same boundary as in most of the versions two that you have in front of you. Additionally, for Council District Three, the northern boundary of Northmore Road, here is Knoxville on the eastern, northeastern portion of Council District Three. And then it goes to the Rock Island Trail as the break there. Council District Three includes the boundary of Peoria Heights, coming down on Prospect Road to the, to the west, I'm sorry, to the east there. And then in order to stay off out of a neighborhood association, that kind of is a a Tetris block shaped here in the East Bluff, that's the reason for that kind of notch here in Council District One. One to account for population needs, but also to account for a neighborhood association that's kind of awkwardly shaped. So the southern boundary here is McClure Avenue between three and two. It goes north on University, west on Forest Hill, northwest on Gale, and then Richwoods for the remainder between three and two. And then it's, in essence, the, the bluff for the, the break between Districts One and Two. Yeah, noting that, you know, again, Flanagan, Glen Oak Flanagan Neighborhood Association would be split in this scenario as well for that situation. So that helps.
In that one, it's only one neighborhood association that's being split. Correct?
In.
In version.
Version one, correct. It's similar to the issue with version four. It's the same neighborhood association is split in both of those two versions. That's correct.
So I don't, you know, it seems to me, I don't know if you can show the existing map real quick, that it's similar to what we currently have.
Everybody seeing that piece?
We can see it.
Okay.
I recall one major concern with this map with District One, that it goes heavy into the East Bluff. There's a lot of population there. And my concern was having the south side near North Valley and the East Bluff with with the level of challenges under one council member would, in my opinion, not only not be fair to that council member, but not be fair to that, that population of people. So that, that was one of the concerns. I, I thought that it was the least favored from the discussion that we had last time, but Josh, can you put those down? We can always bring them back up.
Will do. Thanks.
Well, that, thank you for that. Councilmember, oh, go ahead. Councilmember Jensen, and then I think Councilmember Reganbuck has his hands up.
Well, I, I said what I want, you know, I just wanted to bring that forth.
Okay.
For consideration. So thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I kind of remember the discussion the same as you, that I thought we talked about this in pretty great length, that this, to me, is just the total opposite of two point three, in that you're, you're using side streets as a dividing line. And clearly, in my parochial view, dividing the East Bluff to three council members, that's just gonna really disrupt any synergy that we currently have. But I would also say with no reflection on any council member, but that would be an extremely needy area that District One would involve a lot of challenges from areas that expect a high, have, have high expectations. So just the way it splits up the East Bluff, and you, you can look at numerous boundary lines. I, I think two point three is far superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna appreciate staff and specifically Josh for putting this together. You know, looking at the different versions of, you know, my district or District Four doesn't change all that much between two point one, two point two, and two point three. It sounds like two point three so far has been the most favorable out of the council members that have spoke thus far. And when I look at it, you know, I think it does a, a good job of, you know, one of the things that I voiced last week was, again, trying to, you know, District Four is a very diverse district. And so getting back to those diversity numbers that it currently has, and I think we did increase in that space when I look at non-Hispanic Black, and then also within non-Hispanic Asian, those numbers did increase in the, in the district. So I do think it does a good job of mirroring the diversity that the district has always been known for, and so we definitely want to maintain that. As some of the other counselors said, it's very easy to explain that, hey, if you live on this side of Royal Memorial, you're in District Two, which is second to none, with my colleague Councilman Grab. Or if you're on the other side of Royal Memorial, you're in District Four with me. Northmore is a, a good split. Hey, if you're on this side of Northmore and Roland Acres, you're with Councilman Grab. And if you're on this side of Northmore, you're in District Four with, with myself. So, you know, it, it is going to, you know, just taking the emotions out of it. I do enjoy representing, you know, subdivisions, but we, again, we're thinking about the long term of, of these districts. And, and you got to take the emotions out of it. And so, you know, I do enjoy, you know, the neighbors in Roland Acres and Sherwood Forest and, and the neighborhoods all over within the district. But District, or map two point three right now is my favorite of the ones presented thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you. One, one other thing that, as, as I'm looking here, when we, we got it, and we're not the only ones who are going through redistricting efforts. There are a lot of other, actually, every other entity is also going through this. And we heard the word synergy tonight, and there is some synergy going on with the county and the city and the way that that relationship works together. And I know they have, they have also come up with their maps. And while, while it's not the reason to create a map for us based on that, what I do see whenever I overlay that map with this two point three is the ability for there to be certain county board districts, even within the actual districts that we're drawing. One of those that really does stand out is the new District Four of the county board, which takes part of District Two up what would be in the West Bluff, and then continues it down to the Business District. So some of the things that may seem sort of interesting at first sight, for example, the going, going down to the business downtown area with the, with District Two actually probably has some overlay into what other entities that are going through the redistricting problem, process are doing. And I think that as we go forward, that relationship based with multiple county, city entities, being able to have the conversation and to pull resources together to be able to do projects is one that benefits everybody who calls Peoria home. Just, just one more comment, I guess, that, that leans me towards two point three.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would make a motion that we move forward with option two point three.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Is there any additional questions or comments before we go to vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Mayor Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Sears?
Yes.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reganbuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Wow, thank you. That's fantastic. Mr. Manager, there needs to be a, a public hearing, right? What would you, what, what are our next steps, please? I think you're muted.
Wish I had a dollar for every time I was muted on Zoom and started to talk. I think that, you know, from, from the next steps, if we need to have a public hearing, and I'll, I'll confirm that with, with the Corporation Council, we could certainly set that up to have the public hearing on the night of the eighth at our next city council meeting. And then I would urge the council that we would take this for adoption on the twenty-second of February, so that we had time for a, a, a public hearing about the proposed map. And then we bring that back for, for adoption at the end of the month at our second regularly scheduled meeting.
That sounds good. It doesn't require an additional meeting, unscheduled meeting, we just tag it on to our additional regularly scheduled meetings.
Correct.
Okay. Fantastic. We may, we may wrap this up before anticipating. Madam Clerk, what do we have next? Oh, Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, at least from, from my perspective, and perhaps from many perspectives, I would just like to thank Councilman Grab and Councilman Reganbuck for their hard work in putting together the fine points of that map that we just approved. I, I appreciate that. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very well said. I also want to thank Mr. Josh Navin and Mr. Patrick Urick for their hard work. I mean, I know they went through a lot of rounds, and round and round and round, and it's, it's not easy work to try to, you know, satisfy all the requirements and, and all the requests. And, but I, I think, wow, that made all the difference in the world. So thank you. Thank you both. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. I have not received anything in my office.
Okay. Are there, oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, do we, do we need to close the policy session?
We do. Yes, we do need a motion to close.
Okay. Well, do I need to, don't I need to open it up for? Don't need to open it up for anyone from the audience?
They can speak under citizens' comment with regards to any of the maps or to the redistricting process.
Okay, I understand. Can I get a motion to close the policy session? Moved by Councilmember Valpula, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Sears?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reganbuck?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to virtually address the council? Are there any citizens that are present that would like to address the council? Hearing none, I'd like to ask, due to our storm emergency, I'd like to ask, Mr. Manager, if you would give us a, a briefing on the status of the storm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd want to kind of inform everyone of what we're anticipating with this major storm event that's coming and bearing down on the city of Peoria. We're currently forecasted to receive three to four inches of snow tonight, possibly four to six inches of snow from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, another one to two inches Wednesday night, and then a little bit less than an inch on Thursday. The total accumulation is predicted to be between eight to 14 inches as of this morning, and there's about a 37% chance that we might actually get even more snow than that. So this afternoon, we issued a parking ban that went into effect at 6:00 p.m. tonight and will last until 6:00 p.m. on Thursday. I know that the IPOS notice said until Saturday, but the official parking ban is through 6:00 p.m. on Thursday. We're asking that people move their vehicles off of city streets so that our plow drivers can efficiently work to plow the streets and not plow in cars, and so that our emergency responders can obviously get into residence. We have opened up our parking decks downtown. That would be the Twin Towers Deck, the Niagara Deck, the Jefferson Deck, and we've also worked with Northwoods Mall to open a proportion of their parking lot to serve for people that have no other place to park other than on the street that they could move those cars to Northwoods Mall. These locations, Northwoods Mall will be open until Friday evening, and then our parking decks will be open until Saturday morning. So obviously, for some people that have multiple vehicles on the street, this is something that we can we can certainly help them with. This will be free. The parking garages will be monitored by security and obviously, our police department will be keeping an eye on them as well. We do have a plan, obviously, with the parking ban in effect, that we will be ticketing and towing those cars that are still on the streets. We're going to focus on the primary snow routes first. Obviously, those are our major thoroughfares before we would ever do anything in the residential streets, because we know that some people may still have difficulties with moving their vehicles, but we're really trying to urge people to do that. In addition, we're going to close City Hall for the next two days to the public, and we're going to have city staff is going to be working from home where they can, answering phones, taking messages, but it's also to try and minimize the public trips into City Hall. Right now, our primary focus that we want people to do is stay off the streets, let our public works professionals do what they need to do to keep the streets plowed, to continue to work. They're going to be working for the next 24 hours very diligently, and then hopefully, we'll be able to open back up on Friday. Our community development department has been working very closely with the continuum of care to ensure that with the, we currently do have shelter capacity that is available in our community for people that are homeless and that are experiencing homelessness, so we can certainly help them to coordinate that. We've given some information to our police department to also, if they see somebody who's unsheltered, to work to help to get them into a shelter as well. Since earlier today, Public Works has been pre-treating the streets. They've been working to put liquid brine down. Hopefully, not a lot of it washed off with the rain that's been falling. And then we're also bringing in contractors to work on our residential streets as well, in addition to our own city staff that will be working. So they're going to be working, you know, we normally have our A, B, and C routes in the residential areas, and in a storm like this, that's going to go out the window. We're going to continue to work really around the clock to try and keep the plows on the streets and start to work towards ensuring that all the streets get plowed, and we continue to work through that effort as well. We've had some discussion with GFL, our new waste hauler, as well as the City-County landfill. The landfill's going to be closed tomorrow, so there will be no trash collection services tomorrow. They'll be extended a day. So if you have trash collection on Wednesday, it will now be on Thursday morning. If you have trash collection on Thursday, it will be on Friday morning, and if you have trash collection on Friday, it will be extended to Saturday morning. So, and then hopefully, normal schedules will resume next week. So we're continuing to work on this. We'll be continuing to send messages out to the public, informing them of the efforts or any changes in the plan if we get, if we get less snow or we're able to do that, and we'll continue to keep you informed as well, council, as we go forward with this effort. It's a major storm. We're expecting a lot of snow, and we just really want people to stay home right now and be safe. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Any questions for the manager? Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, did you hear an alarm regarding the parking ban to our phones this evening? But I wonder if the citizens know the places that are open for parking? How do they know? Do they know where to park?
So, so what, so, Councilman, yes, we sent that notice out. That's what went out on the cellphones. If you're out looking at the National Weather Service and the warnings, we've listed all of those locations out on that website. So the National Weather Service has that listed as places where people can go to park. We've issued that out on social media. We've been telling people where they can go and where they can move that. We're encouraging people to make arrangements. If their neighbor has driveway capacity, obviously, share that, that your driveway with your neighbors. That's something that we would hope that people would do. And really, the effort is to try and get as many cars off the streets so that we can clear the streets as quickly as we can.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick question for this manager. If there is any change to the change with regards to garbage pickup, will that be, residents be notified? How will they know? Look on the website?
Absolutely. We'll continue to send out press releases and let people know, and continue to use social media to get the word out as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for the manager about the snowstorm plan? Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, I have one other item, if I could, just to introduce for everyone, and Kimberly, if you could turn your camera on. I'd like to introduce the entire city council to Kimberly Richardson. Kimberly is our new Assistant City Manager. She's come to us from the city of Evanston, where she was the Deputy City Manager in the city of Evanston, and we are very happy to have her here and look forward to her endeavors, and she gets to start and right away work on a snow with her.
I promise I didn't bring the snow with me, so apologies from the north. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I look forward to greeting you all in person as well as virtually in the coming days, and I'll continue to help serve the city of Peoria and your goals. So thank you for having me here, and I look forward to getting to know the community, so.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. We're happy to have you, Kimberly Richardson. Okay, that seems to wrap things up. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Ruckriegel, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reganbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckriegel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Good work tonight. Thank you for your service. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Be safe.